All right, Chairman Silver is absent today, not available, so I'll be chair of the meeting. First up after pleasure, allegiance is public comments, so open the floor to public comments.
Just want to make one, I don't know whether it's my Ellen Doug on Twenty Creek Park Street, but the weather is nice now, so getting out and I think the rail trail is absolutely fabulous and see tons of people walking it. Our sidewalks are in deplorable condition and I know Chapter 90 funds are available for those things. And I know that in towns surrounding us, they tended to be years ago rural and agricultural act and in side, we didn't have a great sidewalk system. We've been a village since our inception, so we've got terrific sidewalks. It's one of the things that attracts people, the downtown and the walkability, but we've let them go now too long. On just great road from Mill Street into the Boys and Girls Club, there's six feet holes missing in the sidewalk. And that's just one. I mean, the sidewalk on Pop Street is WPA, it's in the 30s. But, you know, whatever the plan is to do something, we really need to pay some attention to the sidewalks. Instead of paving great road or paving some of the others, just in my opinion, I'm hoping that that's on someone's radar and agenda, that we can start to do some of those before someone gets hurt badly.
One second, I have to say I agree with you, some of the streets is pretty difficult if you try to run or walk up that street, and I know Selectman Gavin does quite a bit of foot traffic across the town, too. I'm sure he has an opinion on some of the sidewalks, too. Aaron, perhaps we could pick that up and see what the plan is at a future date?
Absolutely.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. Next on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes. So I will move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of March 20th, 2018 as shown. Seconded by Cheryl. Any discussion? All right, no discussion. No vote, all those in favor? Next up is item three, correspondence. Move to accept the list of correspondences as shown, A through G. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Melissa. Anyone have any discussion points?
I have one comment, and it's actually a positive observation. I was impressed by the limited number of openings that we have for, you know, opportunities within the town. It just shows that they're, you know, among our correspondence, for those who aren't aware, tonight happens to be here are the list of the openings that we have within the town in our committees and whatever. And there's very few, which means that, as is always the case here in Maynard, we have so many volunteers that are stepping up. Sometimes it's more people doing more than one job, but at least all of our positions are getting filled. And so it's good to see and it's, I think it shows a vibrant community.
I have one comment on D, the Earth Day Celebration Notice. In reading through it, I see the river dedication for 2:30 to 3:15, and the very last portion of that is the launching of biodegradable earth floats into the Aspet River. Did we ever get the story finalized about how that was going to work, if they had the permission to do so, where they're going to do it from and all that?
Yes, the sponsor, I believe it's Larry Schultz, has met with the police and DPW and toured and despite the recommendation of the board to consider alternate sites, determined that the Florida Road Crossing was their best choice. But they have made the adjustments about using the parking lot, not being in conflict with the Little League Parade, those sorts of things. They've made adjustments.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, all those in favor? Correspondence, thank you. All right, number four is the consent agenda. So I move to approve the consent agenda as shown. Consent is a, actually, you second, anybody seconded first?
Second.
All right, thanks David. Consent agenda is a one-day special permit for the Maynard Community Gardeners on May 19th, 2018. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. All right, agenda item number five, one-day special permit, flag retirement at Memorial Park. I'll read the motion, which is to move to accept and approve the one-day special permit at Memorial Park Thursday, June 14th, 2018 at 6:00 PM with a rain date of Saturday, June 16th, 2018 at 11:00 AM. Flag retirement. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
David's second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say I think this is a great change of venue to begin with. For those who, again, might not know, Flag Day, every year there is a flag retirement ceremony that used to be done at the, the, American Legion, where they burn old and used flags. And because of the Legion having left us, or the building anyway, having left us, they needed a new spot to have that ceremony. And they've chose, they've asked to have it at Memorial Park, which is appropriate. And, you know, I think that if, is anybody here from the Elks that's doing it?
Andrea had to work tonight.
Oh, okay. I hope that they notify the schools and just let the schools know because that's all just part of...
The Boy Scouts, the Girls Scouts.
Yeah, I know that they're going to be there, but even if the other kids that aren't part of the Boys and Girl Scouts can be there and get some people down, because that's quite a, quite a ceremony. And it's, you know, I just think it's a great idea to move it to Memorial Park.
Thank you, Dave. The only comment I had is in Andrea's email correspondence. Becky, if there was discussion about police detail, did we get to the bottom of that? Are we good to go in public safety, Andrew, or?
Police didn't think that they needed it.
Yeah, okay.
Plus the fire got out of control.
Yeah.
They're also looking for a Board of Selectmen attendance, if you want to confirm privately or through us, we'll be happy to.
I anticipate I would, I'll check the day of the week.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, I'm simple. That should be interesting. Does seem like a better venue, that area. All right, item number six, the Cultural Council Presentation. Okay, so, if I can get this straight here. Jeff Swanberg, Cultural Council Chairperson, will present on Maynard as a canvas program its status and next steps. I believe he filed, sent the file attachment, PDF, if anybody had a chance to take a look at it. But apparently we have, all right. Hello, Eric?
I'm his bodyguard.
So let me give you a bit of background on the project. This has been in the works for some amount of time, and largely spearheaded by Eric, but the effort is to get, at first one, but hopefully after this, more murals up around Maynard for a variety of reasons. It just makes the community look more vibrant, more attractive, it encourages public arts. And so we've been working with the EDC over the last year on the best way to go about this. We have selected a building, gotten permission from the building owner. It is the Murphy Snyder Building at the corner of Waltham and Parker. And when we moved to the discussion of funding, we were hoping to approach the Board of Selectmen about a year ago, maybe a little less, to get funding before we submitted proposals. And the EDC disagreed with this idea. What they wanted to see is us collect proposals and have a plan in place first before we sought funding from you. And so that's what we did. We put out a call for entry largely based on other similar call for entries for murals around the country. We set funding based on the lower end of a range of funding for similar projects, again, from around the country. And we put out a call for artists online, and we got a very good response about, I think it was 81 different works of art were submitted for the two walls of this building. And from there, we selected a jury made up of several members, prominent figures in town, and members of the Cultural Council to vote on this 81 and narrow it down to six finalists, three from each wall. And that has been done, and I want to show you those finalists today. And so we'll just go through them real quickly, and Eric is going to pass around glossy photocopies for you right there.
Thank you.
But if you look up there, these are the, we can't go back.
Should be able to roll it back and forth.
Did I vote for any of these?
So this is the one on 27 right here. So you can see the windows. Artists were encouraged to use that creatively. The building owners already gave us permission to do coats of paint, remove some of the trees that are blocking the view from the street, so that will be taken care of. So this one uses a lot of different colors, black and white interspersed with color. Do you want to say anything about the individual ones, Eric?
Well, in an abstract way, they're supposed to represent different racial types, but it's fairly well camouflaged, being, I guess, helpful for Maynard because we don't have a lot of minorities, but that was his intent on those.
And then the next one is a bit more colorful.
This is on the Route 27 side. This is mural one. Again, it's a very fluid, attractive, abstract, quasi-realistic thing that seems to have motion again, which we like, you know, it kind of pulls your eye over to the right. It allows for some of the, you know, the windows are always an interference because they have to stay there. And the owner is actually going to be putting in some glass blocks.
Can you do me a favor, just go back to the first slide you had up there, the first mural?
Absolutely.
Oh, that, no, that one. All right, so that's looking at it from inside the parking lot with the Dunkin' Donuts and 7-Eleven.
The bottom one is from the parking lot, the top one is from Route 27 on the exact opposite side.
I was looking at the, I couldn't tell what building that was.
This is my artwork here, just so you know. This is in conjunction with the owner. The owner is very willing to improve the sides of the buildings. You can see there's a pipe there, and if you go to the right of the image on the bottom mural, too, there's a drainage issue. It's covered with moss, so all this is going to be taken care of by the owner to make nice and smooth and clean and...
So the first, the first three are for the ones from 27, and the second three are from the 7-Eleven parking lot. So, and here's the third one for that side.
Eric?
I like the sort of digitized feel to this, and you really get a feeling of flying or motion. And of course, the target's a, I guess, a hibiscus. That's my, I'm getting opinionated.
The trailing, the trailing colors are actually individual bricks from the, from the building that he'll paint with that one. And from the 7-Eleven side, this is by the same artist as the first one from the 27. Both of those from that artist made the top pick. Eric, do you want to say?
He's sort of including, obviously, an activity here, running, which stands out. The eye, I don't know if it's symbolic, if it means something in particular, but it's got enough mystery in it to keep your attention. This is, works for me on a lot of levels. We have the birds, we have the fluid thing of the design where you've got this uplift and you've got these birds. And what happened here was we asked for Trumploy as one of the ideas that you could use. And if, for anybody doesn't know what Trumploy is, it's painting on a two-dimensional surface to make it look like a third dimension. So you have the figure in the middle down there, and then you have the figure at the window, which is actually a Trumploy. It's a painted window of Henry David Thoreau. And then the guy at below is Mr. Babe Ruth in a derby. He links local territory, you know, Sudbury and Maynard, and so on.
And the last one?
Okay, I've got, I've got two on that.
There are two submitted proposals for that, similar design, so.
This doesn't have the window allocation, but I know that it's being worked on. It's a very natural thing. It's quite different than the rest. It's more realistic. And, yeah, that's it. What you have there, let me just say, is on the samples you have right there, you've got two versions of what I call the Babe Ruth. One's in the uniform and one isn't. So that's going to be voted upon by us.
Well, you can't change it up, like when Babe, when it's baseball season, he can be in a uniform?
You can put it there.
Off-season, he can be in his...
What makes that particularly interesting is that if you're at 7-Eleven and you say, hey, look, there's Babe Ruth, why don't I just go across the street or across the parking lot and take a picture of him, you know, him with me or me with him? And it's very interactive in that sense. At least we hope so.
So our, our plan is to, the Cultural Council is having its award show, you may remember the one we had at Fine Arts Theater last year. We're planning to have that at the end of the month on April 30th, which is a Monday night. And we would like to announce the winner of this mural competition there at that event. And we feel it would have a lot more weight behind it if, instead of announcing, here's the winner, or winners, one for each wall, and now we will go seek funding, we feel it would have more weight behind the announcement if we could say, here's the winner and it is a funded project, and we are good to go, and this will actually be put up on a wall in town. And so we were here to let you know what we have done, what we're planning to do between now and that announcement, and take any questions you may have on the execution. And we've went to the EDC with this idea, and they supported what we've done and our plan going forward so far. Jack couldn't make it tonight.
He sent an email, though.
Yes, he did.
Yeah, he sent an email in support of it.
Is your proposal for the funding, did it come from the BEEP grant?
No, we, well, yes, it was from a BEEP grant, yes, sorry.
Originally, yeah.
From the same fund of money.
Okay.
Any questions, anybody? I have one question. So from start to finish, and obviously it's not like a carpentry project, right? It's artwork. How long, Eric, maybe I'll ask you, how long do these typically take when they're, when the artist starts? Is it a couple months?
Of course, you have to factor in weather, which you really can't factor in. But I would, I guess maybe two weeks on this project. I mean, you have to prime it, you have to paint it, then you have to seal it, and things have to dry between. And I would say roughly two weeks.
And just to confirm, the total amount you're looking for for both walls is 25,000 or not to exceed that?
Correct.
Right.
Do we know how much is currently in the BEEP pot?
There's over 100,000.
Well, we're not voting on this tonight.
That's right, we're waiting for the EDC's official endorsement, which won't come until this Thursday. So it'll be able to be voted on on the 17th.
Let's see, I mean, I think it's clear that you have support up here from at least a few of us, right? I'm not going to speak for the chairman who's not here tonight, but David, I'm assuming you're in support of us that you're on the committee here?
Well, I, I support it. I don't know, I know I voted for Babe Ruth, but I don't know if I voted for any of the other ones.
You'll get, you'll get a second chance.
The interesting thing, as I voted, I was able to, I learned about the votes that the others had submitted. And obviously, not being an artist, some of the other people that were involved in this project were or are artists. And because our minds work differently, what we liked was different. So the ones that I voted yes for, all the artists voted no, and vice versa. But Babe Ruth came through, so.
Try not being an artist and running a council of them, so.
We'll, we'll take care of you.
I can be fixed, like Steve Austin, the astronaut.
How long are these envisioned to stay in place?
I would say a minimum of five years. We're working on the idea that most of them are quite long. They go up to 20 years. As far as maintenance goes, the first thing is that you do it correctly with the amount of, with the paint you use, the primer and the sealer, and the preparation of the surface, you know. But that's, they're, they're made to last. And most of the artists that I've had information from and being online is they often don't require very much maintenance. It's, I think if you think about the 7-Eleven, you might have a problem with a car scraping it over there as they park, you know, that type of thing. But then you get into a different, you get into more of a legal issue.
What's the issue? How do we plan on dealing with the unfortunate potential of vandalism?
Graffiti?
Graffiti.
Oh, graffiti, yeah. Well, they put a graffiti coat on along with the UV coat, and that's the final step. And apparently, the graffiti is relatively easy to get off. You use a graffiti remover, so.
Like if somebody wanted to come and just toss red paint on it, or something like that, like you see these people do it.
Well, I guess on the local scene would probably have something to do. Some of these guys are from California, the ones from Maryland, the ones from Brooklyn, New York. So I guess the immediate thing, yes, they would come up and take care of the situation there. I mean, that's, that's pretty obvious. Some of the artists will leave behind paint samples as well as numbers, so you can go back and paint by number, if you will, if you're not the artist. But I think a number of them would actually come here.
Do we have security cameras, like through 7-Eleven or anything over there?
I'm sorry.
Are there any security cameras in that parking lot at 7-Eleven?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
Just in case.
On that side, that might not be difficult to add. On the 27 side, that might be a bit more challenging.
Right.
The issue of vandalism notwithstanding, we are creating a contract with the owner of the property that he will not change it for a minimum of five years. And at some cost to the, like, he would pay the town back over time if that changes for the investment the town made in it.
Do you plan on putting up any, like, plaque as to sort of tell what the story is of the, of the artwork? Or is it just going to be?
We hadn't thought about it, but maybe we could.
Just wondered, just...
That'd be cool.
Maybe you should make a search port, make it interesting online.
Yeah, like with a QR code? That'd be awesome.
Okay.
You say that, but it could be working.
Perhaps artist name and the description, because even when we voted, we had a little description about what that particular art...
When we, when we vote again, especially you, Dave, you're going to have a, another statement, another statement.
Narrow it down to the finalists.
Yeah, yeah, we have to choose.
These are the final ones, we want to narrow it down to one, one per wall.
My enjoyment of Babe Ruth.
If you pick Babe Ruth, we had to make sure that they put him in a Red Sox uniform and not a Yankee uniform.
Well, that was part of the discussion we had, too, is the reason that he had put him in as, you know, wearing street clothes is because when he was in the Maynard area, he wasn't wearing his Red Sox uniform. He would hang out in Maynard back in the day as your average citizen. And then, interestingly enough, the guy who was voting that night with me lives in the house that Babe Ruth used to visit or something like that. Brad. He either lives in the house or the smokehouse or something.
The barn was a butcher shop.
Yeah, that's what it was, yeah.
Used to go and buy, yeah, meat from.
Any comments from the gallery with the public?
I have some, but they've all been addressed, so.
Fabulous. All right, gentlemen, I thank you. I look forward to, you know, the next step?
Thank you.
What's the next step?
Before EDC approval, and then we'll be back here for the final debate.
In two weeks.
Which is when, next week?
Seventeenth.
No.
Still before, well before the 30th.
Seventeenth to the eighteenth.
Two weeks. All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Missing seven? Here we go, seven. Item seven on the agenda, DPW update on water and sewer, along with some special speaking guests. So DPW Director Aaron McClosko will discuss current plans surrounding well number four, the development of the well field, well seven and its status, and will update the board and the public about White's Pond as a source for water. So, Aaron, if you wouldn't mind, I'll let you introduce yourself, and then I'll just ask the public to hold all comments till the very end, because I believe you have a presentation to sit through as well.
That's correct.
And then we'll address them at the end. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the board, thank you very much for having us here this evening. My name is Aaron McClosko, Director of Public Works for the Town of Maynard. Joining me is Garrett McCarthy, Principal Engineer, Stantec, Katie Chamberlain, Senior Environmental Engineer with Stantec, and David Harwood, Senior Hydrogeologist with GeoInsight. They are our consultants assisting the town. DPW was of water and sewer projects, initiatives, and operation of all of our treatment plants and facilities. They've all been working with the town for a number of years, some decades, right? I think they've all been, at least Gary and Dave were involved with the construction and implementation of our water treatment facilities. And Katie has been assisting us last couple of years with our operations at those same treatment facilities. So they'll be joining us tonight and going through a status update of our treatment system and some of the recent events that we've had, and also some of our projects that we're working on, both short term and long term, on the water treatment side. So I'll turn it over to Garrett.
Great. Thank you, Aaron. Good evening.
Good evening.
This evening, I'd like to go through this presentation. Let me see if I can get this right. There we go. So on the, on the agenda, what we want to do is, is if some folks may not be aware of the, of the water supply system, we want to give an overview so folks understand the components of that. We want to provide a status of some of the things that we've been working on at, at each of the water supply facilities. And they're listed there, Rockland Avenue. We've got three, three sources up there in a treatment plant. Almabo Road has a couple of sources and a treatment plant. Well four has, has a single well right now in a, in a water treatment plant. And we'll talk a little bit about White Pond as well. White Pond is the historical source for the Town of Maynard from the late 1800s, and, and it was taken offline about 20 years ago when we, when we moved to all groundwater sources. And then we want to, once everyone sees, has an understanding of the different sources, we want to talk about comparing the town's demand to the ability of those sources to supply that demand, and share with you some of the concerns that we have, and, and also to share with you some of the solutions that we're looking at to, to resolve the issue. So I'll, it's not as clean as I would like, but I'll turn it over to Katie, and she can talk about the different supplies.
Do you guys have handouts, too, that might be a little bit clearer on some of these? So this is...
One second. Can everyone see the screen from back there? Yeah, okay, thanks.
So this is an overview map of Maynard and all of its water supplies, as well as the water storage tanks. So up there on the north end, you've got the Rockland Ave Water Filtration Plant, which treats water from wells 5G, 6G, and 7G. Then if you go down clockwise, you've got the Old Marlboro Road Filtration Plant, which treats the groundwater from wells 1G, 2G, and was designed to treat 3G as well. And then you've got the Well Four Filtration Plant, and there's just one well there, that's we call Well 4G. And then down in the lower left-hand corner, you can see that's where White Pond is located, not technically in Maynard, but it is your, you know, water supply to use if needed. And then you've got the two water storage tanks. The first one, the concrete tank, is sized for one and a half million gallons, and then the larger one, the steel tank, is 3.1 million gallons. So that's just a quick overview. Seven groundwater wells at three different water treatment plant sites, as well as the one surface water of White Pond two storage tanks. So then here, we're just going to talk about at each of the water treatment plant areas. So Rockland Ave, Old Marlboro Road, and Well Four, we're just going to go through some quick status of activities that have been going on in recent history or are currently going on, just to get everyone up to speed. So this Rockland Avenue Water Treatment Plant is where we'll start. That source has been online since 2002. And, let's see here, this past summer, so August 2017, Stantec came in and helped to evaluate some inconsistent water quality issues that they were seeing at that water treatment plant related to the manganese levels there. You know, the capacity at those wells were being severely limited by the poor water quality. As a result of that, wells 5G and 6G were cleaned to try to resolve some of those water quality issues. Also attempted to clean well 7G. It did not work out that well. It was a failed cleaning, the pump became stuck, and then just last week or over the West, I don't know.
It was the end, the end of last week.
End of last week. They finished a second attempt at cleaning that well. But then the pump got stuck again, broke off, which is what that photo is. And maybe these guys can talk to it a little bit more, I was not there.
Yeah, it was a, a pretty unique situation. We don't see this happen very often, but as the drilling... Yeah, it was a, a pretty unique situation. We don't see this happen very often, but as the drilling, as the well cleaning crew were pulling the, the pipe and the pump out of the well, it became stuck, and actually that happened a few months ago. And so since that time, we've tried a number of different ways to, to, to remove the pipe and pump from the well so we could get in and clean the, clean the well. And last Friday was, was kind of our last ditch effort, where we, we brought in a pretty significant crane and, and, which has a lot of pulling power. And, and we were able to pull on it, and it was coming up. We probably got about 70 feet of the pipe removed, and which left about 120 feet of pipe and pump in the well. And at that point, one of the pipe couplings failed. And so the, the pipe and the pump are stuck in the well. And so it's, the, the solution there is to, is to have to drill another well adjacent to the, to the current well. We, we brought in a few different experts, two or three different drilling crews, to, just to get ideas on the table before we, we tried this last, last ditch effort. And, and it was not, it was not successful. So the, the solution is to, to not spend any more money trying to, trying to fix what we have, but to, but to replace that well. So it's, it's a bit of an issue because it, it's one of three wells that, that provides water to the Rockland Avenue Water Treatment Plant. And so as you'll see in later slides, it, it reduces the, the capacity that's available from that site for the, for the next few months.
What's the timeline and cost of having to drill a new well adjacent to that?
We're gonna get into the, the details of that, but that is, it's a good six to nine month, nine month process anyways, to get the permitting and get the work done.
I think we can start drilling this spring though, is what we talked about, right, Dave? And then start the DEP permitting process?
The DEP permitting process is, takes a long time.
Is the challenge, yeah.
But we hope to drill this spring, and if everything goes well, we could potentially have DEP approval maybe in the winter.
So that's, that's Rockland Avenue. And the next source was Old Marlboro Road?
Yep. Yep. So Old Marlboro Road, this is, was online in 1998. And remember, at this site, there's well 1G, 2G, and 3G that this treatment plant treats for. So what's going on right now there is that we're in the midst of a design project to do some upgrades to that water treatment plant. We're just getting through 90% design right now, actually should be done with that by the end of this month. And just as a reminder, the upgrades for this plant were a result of some TCHM excursions that occurred in 2016. So the major goal of these upgrades to this water treatment plant were to increase, you know, public health protection by reducing the disinfectant byproducts that were coming out of that plant, which required some changes to chemical treatment. We're putting some other operational efficiency improvements as part of this upgrade to backwash monitoring, replacing all the filter media that's due to be replaced at this point in time, and just some miscellaneous improvements while we're in there doing work. Makes sense to get it done then. So that's going on now. The goal is to have the construction completed by the end of this year, 2018, so by the end of December. The other thing that's going on in the background at Old Marlboro Road is there's those three wells, 1G, 2G, and 3G. Currently, well 3G is not active, and that's been offline for about 10 years or so, I believe.
Correct.
And that was related to some water quality concerns with the water coming from that well. So what we're looking at now is potentially bringing that well back online, which requires doing a bunch of water quality testing and going through DEP approval processes as well. So we're kind of in the midst of working with DEP to see what we need to do to get that to happen.
And bringing that source back online, obviously we run it through the treatment plant, so the finished water from the plant is, is safe, safe to drink.
And then, so the next slide, oh, I gotta have this, is related to the Well Four source. And what's going on there, Dave, if you want to talk about this stuff?
Well, before you jump in, Dave, so at Well Four, we've got a single well at that, at that location that feeds the water treatment plant. And in the past year or two, there's been an effort to, to identify another source out at that, at that location. So the idea would be to, to develop that new source and bring that water into the existing water treatment plant that's there. And, and Dave is helping us with permitting that new source.
As Gary said, even before the problems with Well Seven, it was identified that a new source was needed. And we didn't think there were any sites left in Maynard, but one was identified. It's about 800 feet northeast of the existing Well Four. And we started the DEP permitting process for that, just, just recently started. We hope to test it this summer. Preliminary indications that it maybe could be worth 500 gallons a minute. Only after we do the full testing and DEP permitting that we know exactly what it can produce. It could be less. The water quality was, was good. It's gonna need treatment for iron and manganese, which the existing treatment plant can, can handle. And as I said, the DEP permitting process is, is very lengthy. If we can test it this summer, we wouldn't, I wouldn't expect DEP approval before next spring.
Is the process that you go through for that, the same process that you would go through for Well Seven?
Surprisingly, it is.
It is.
DEP, they do have a replacement well process. It doesn't apply to bedrock wells. Replacement bedrock well is the same as permitting a new source. In this case, it, it can be done somewhat more simply, because it's, we have some existing infrastructure there, power, et cetera. We already have a site plan from construction. So it can be streamlined. One of the major parts of the permitting process is determining the contribution zone to the well so that it can be protected. That wouldn't change, and so that's all, doesn't have to be redone. So things like that can cause some, both cost and time savings.
So the rest of the, I guess we can move on to the next one, Katie?
Well, I should say, even though we're gonna get DEP approval by next spring, and you're gonna do final well construction, we gotta, you're gonna have to drill underneath the wetland to connect that new well to the treatment plant. So another year for designing and construction.
To bring it online.
So probably the summer of 2020 for the new source at Well Four.
So the, the next source we wanted to talk about is, is White Pond. Again, that's the, that is the, was the original source of water for the, for the Town of Maynard. It was, it was first, it was first utilized in the late 1800s. At the time, it was actually gravity-fed into the Town of Maynard way back then. And it was up until the mid to late 90s that the town continued to use that source. Always was able to draw, historically was able to draw 1 million gallons per day, which was the average, it's about the average use for the town. It's located in the towns of Stowe and Hudson, right on, on the line. And actually, it's Sudbury's right, right there as well. So it's near the, the Fire, Fire Academy. So the reason it is offline is because it is a surface water treat, it's a surface water. And EPA regulations back in the 90s required that a surface water source be treated. And there was some studies done, some initial design was done to understand the cost of treatment for, for a treatment plant at that site. And at the time, the town voted not to build a, a treatment plant at White Pond, and the plan was to, was to go the way, the way we did, which is to rely on groundwater sources and to build treatment at, at those locations. And, and that has served the town for the past 20 years. It's, it's given you multiple sources, so it gives you some redundancy that way. So the, the plan that, that was executed has been, has been a good one. But you've always had White Pond still in your back pocket, basically. You can't use it because it has to be treated first, but it is, it is a source of water that, that you, you control, and, and if you choose to move forward with it, it would be another source of water for, for the town to use.
Gary, you say that we can use it because, you know, we still have the water, we just have to treat it, but don't we have to deliver it?
You do.
And that's, what is it, 10, that's not 10 miles, but four miles?
It's, it's, I think it's maybe three miles.
Three miles.
But there's an existing pipe there.
There is.
That's in poor condition.
Oh.
It'd have to be replaced. So, so there is an existing pipe there. And that, that, you know, that, that was used, obviously in the past, to convey the water to the town.
Yeah. Would, I'm not an engineer, but would the gravity system still work? Assuming you put new pipe in. Wouldn't, would you have to put new pumping station or something over there to get the water to flow, or?
We would, we would count on a pumping system to convey the water. Well, there's two ways to do it. One is to build a treatment plant at the, at the site. There is room there. And, and then pump the treated water to the Town of Maynard. An alternative would be to just put a pumping system there and convey the raw water to Maynard where there'd be a, a treatment plant closer to, or, or somewhere within town.
And if you know, for White's Pond's delivery system for the, the pipe itself, does it, do we have the right of way all the way through to get here?
It hasn't been, I'm not certain of that. You've got, you know, 100 years or more of, of use of that pipe. But we were speaking to Aaron about, about that, that source recently, and, and thinking about beginning to do some study, and that would be the first thing we'd want to look at, is to have a, have a surveyor, you know, pull the deeds, understand what the rights of way are. We know where the pipe is.
Presumably it goes through federal land?
It does. It goes through the, what's now, it was always federal land, but it's now controlled by the Vision of Fish and Wildlife, I believe.
There was a very comprehensive report completed in 2012 by White Pond Citizen Committee that detailed some of the issues regarding the transmission line and the deeds and the rights. And there were some, some recommendations on, I believe the recommendation was to the, from that committee to the town was to try to move forward with identifying what those issues were, try to pursue, resolving those issues and gaining the deeds and the easements, or the easements necessary to access that existing transmission line, and also to repair or install a new one, should the town decide to move forward with it. So that's all detailed in that, in that White Pond Citizen Committee report, which I can, I can send to you if you haven't pursued that. But we've been, we've been reviewing that collectively with this team here recently. And like Gary mentioned, we're gonna be trying to pursue meeting those recommendations and moving forward with, pursuing the viability of, of White Pond and accessing that water as a long-term, as a long-term plan and project.
And Aaron, just something to kind of add to your list of things to think about, especially as it's going through that land, is my recollection from conversations I've had with staff there is that every couple of years, if not every year, the Army Corps of Engineers frequently looks to use that facility as one of their training grounds for different projects. So one year they went in and they did all the, the power transmission lines, and they did solar lines. So a lot of the things that have happened at the park are kind of because the Army of Corps of Engineers looking for a new training project. I think it would be lovely for them to work on putting in...
Water pipes.
Water pipes.
Yeah, yeah, the transmission.
So, I mean, just something to kind of think about exploring. I mean, again, I'm sure it's something that probably takes time to get on the list of their projects for, or for them to think through. But I, I mentioned it to, to Andrew a couple of days ago in passing, but it might be just worth exploring.
Absolutely.
Probably the bigger concern is over the years, habitat within the wildlife area changed. God knows what turtle has decided to move right on top of, you know, the, the pipe, or what, you know, fox has built a, you know, a hut there that suddenly is a protected species.
There's lots of lovely birds and...
Yes. So that's always a concern. Not that I'm, not that I don't support wildlife and everything else. It's just that, you know something's gonna come up.
Right, yeah. We have, there's some techniques in, in underground construction sometimes. In sensitive areas, we can, we can drill a pipe. Particularly, this is a, would be a pressure pipe, so we're not, it doesn't have to be at a, at a perfect slope. So if we're able to use drilling techniques in, in some parts of the, of a, of a pipe installation, that, that helps to solve some of those environmental, sensitive environmental issues.
Is there any precedent for human need to take precedence over the wildlife? I mean, say we are unable to sustain, which is, I think is where we're going here. We're talking about White's Pond, right? Which leads me to believe we're gonna talk about the last page or the second-to-last page, which is supply and demand, right? So it's like this is where the conversation's headed, and we're not gonna be able to meet demand. So in your experience, have you ever seen where a municipality's need to have fresh water, access to fresh water, it would be a little easier to navigate through land of that nature?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. We have, Dave and I did work on, on a project in Northern Rhode Island that, that was the case, that the case was made, and, and exceptions were, were allowed. Sure.
Another question would be for, for a project of this magnitude and importance to a community, especially a small community like ours. I'm probably getting ahead of ourselves, but, but what is your experience in seeing federal grants or other types of opportunities to help with that type of a project?
Yep. The, well, the state of Massachusetts through the Department of Environmental Protection has a, the State Revolving Fund Loan Program, SRF program. There's, some communities are selected for a portion of the principal to be forgiven, basically a grant. I'm not sure exactly if, I'm sure that this project would qualify for that type of funding. And then it's a, it's another standard to be, to be qualified for the principal forgiveness portion of, of that. But that's, that's, that's a possibility. And that is a few steps down the road.
Yeah.
We're, we're not, we're not there yet. There's lots of, lots of studies needs to be done before we, before we get there. So if we wanted, if there's no other questions on White Pond, we can, we can move forward.
I have one last question, too.
Yes.
Previously, it was chlorination that you could use for surface water, you said. So is, is it just the same as what we do with our own groundwater now, the new rules where we have to pump it to, or what, what's the difference between the surface water? What do we have to do differently than what we do from, we pump up now from our own groundwater?
Right. The, the regulation requires multiple treatment barriers for surface water. And, and so chlorine is, is one, one barrier that's used for, for disinfection. There's a filtration requirement, and we can, there's, there's multiple different processes that can be considered to meet the, the filtration requirement. So it's, it's more, the, the thought is, is that as you're, if you're pulling water from the ground, it has had some natural filtration... it has had some natural filtration already. So it's not as, the treatment's not as extensive for groundwater. But for surface water, it is a multiple treatment step that has to be done.
So typically more expensive?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. So just to provide some additional information for the benefit of the board is to let you know that the water system is improving the communication components. Now, the, those water treatment plants and the pump stations, they all communicate using a fiber optic cable, which is a very, it's a very speedy method of communication. It's reliable. It's the best, actually, that we use in the business. And secondly, the town is upgrading its SCADA Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System, which is basically the computer operations of the wells and treatment plants. Okay?
So as you guessed it, this was where the conversation was going, with the supply versus demand stuff that we started to talk about here. So there's a lot going on in this graph, but it paints the picture pretty well of what's going on with the water sources here in town. So the way that this graph is organized is along the horizontal axis, the first three bars represent the capacity at each of the three water treatment plants. So you've got Rockland Ave., then you've got Old Marlboro Road, then you've got Well Four.
And that's reflecting with the current wells that are offline?
Yeah, so the green portion of the bar is today what is average at the plants treated.
What's available?
And going through the wells, what's available. The yellow portion of each bar represents additional capacity that the pumps at those wells are capable of pumping. But because of various restraints, we're not treating that water. And that would be, for instance, at Rockland Ave., Well Seven is down. Well Five and Six have some water quality concerns, where you can only pump so much water out before treatment is no longer effective or inefficient.
Just unclear then, so the yellow portion of that means that, not that the pump station has additional capacity that strips well beyond the known content of the wells that it serves, but if each of the wells that it serves was available to its full capacity, that's the number it would be hitting?
Yes.
Got it?
Yes.
I have a question for you. Do you know what the average number of gallons a household or individual in Maynard uses?
And I think you do know that.
We do from when we've been, it's from when we set the rates.
Okay.
It's in the, it's fifty-four or fifty-five gallons per person per day.
Per person per day?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the average house.
Important question.
Yeah, the state standard, what DEP hopes that communities can be at sixty-five. So Maynard does a nice job in their conservation of water.
Yep. So basically, you can see at each well, there is a large portion of flow that is currently just unavailable at the water treatment plant to be treated, to be provided as a source to your customers. And then if you total each of these wells up, that fourth bar there is the total of all of the groundwater sources at Rockland Ave., Old Marlboro Road, and Well Four. So when you have all of your groundwater sources available as they currently operate today on average, you can meet your average day demand. But you can see, and that's that first small red box there, you cannot meet the max day demand. And sorry for you guys, like the lines at about one MGD, that's the average day demand, current and in the future. And that future value is twenty thirty-five. And then those top lines at like one point five are the maximum day demand, current and then in the future, which projected to twenty thirty-five.
Maybe a stupid question, but how many maximum days a year are there? For example, I assume
It's not a stupid question at all. It's not a lot.
I assume the summertime is more demand, I assume.
Yeah.
And so I assume that, you know, that out of the summertime
Yeah, no, it would literally be like one or two days, right?
The maximum day demand is one day.
One day?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the highest day.
It's the highest day. So, but like you said, it's typically in July, August, sometimes early September, when there's a lot of outdoor water usage. And I know Maynard has had, has had some pretty restrictive use of water outdoors in the past. And you're going to have to continue to do that to manage that max day for this year, for sure.
Yeah, we've typically done, certainly the state mandated restrictions.
Yeah.
And I don't think last year, Aaron, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't even know if last year we had to go beyond the state mandated restrictions. But the year before that, when there was a drought, I think we had to go to the max, whatever the limited amount was. That's just my recollection.
That's correct. Yeah, so our current, our current summertime water restrictions from May 1st to October 1st, no outdoor water between nine AM and five PM. Two summers ago, summer of 2016, we elevated that to no outdoor water from the clock.
Hmm, so something for the board's consideration, not to interrupt that, but for the board's consideration, we may, given the, what we're hearing, we may want to start this spring season with restrictions that are higher than what we typically would have because we're fearful of exceeding limits.
Absolutely, that's definitely going to be a recommendation. You know, that's a discussion that we're going to have here over the next few weeks on what that appropriate restriction would be. I know the customers in the town of Maynard, they have various needs for outdoor watering and expectations of that service to be provided to them. So we want to establish something that's fair, but at the same standpoint, our priority is the health and safety of the town.
Exactly.
Provide safe drinking water and fire protection.
I think, Erin, when we, presuming that that ends up being the recommendation, the path we go down, something we'll just want to think about is how to have clean, accessible language on the website that we can link people out to when that comes up. Because I know we'll all start hearing the same types of comments that we heard last spring. "Oh, it was such a wet winter, how come we already have water restrictions up?" So just again, something to think ahead about.
Absolutely, some type of education piece and then clarify a restriction. And then we're also going to, the next discussion is enforcement. Right, because a restriction is only good enough as the enforcement. That'll be for the discussions that I'm sure we'll have.
Not to sidetrack the conversation, because I thoroughly enjoy it. But with regard to water bans and enforcing, historically, people with wells have been able to do what they want with their own water. Has the state moved in any direction, knowing that in a small locale, well water comes from the main source usually, right? So what's the precedent or what's the, what's
Their water's the same as our water.
Yeah, exactly. Is there, has there been anything set where towns can enforce even private well water use in their own municipality? Or have you seen anything of that? Have you heard any towns challenge that or?
I've heard some towns, the boards of selectmen, I'm sorry, the boards of health of some towns regulating well water use. I can't give you an example, but I've heard that some are considering that.
It's not a crazy question, I would assume.
Right, right. And you're right. It's just another straw in the same glass. And so everyone's, you know, these, all these wells are pulling from, you know, similar aquifers.
To be clear, though, our current problem isn't capacity of water availability. It's our ability to actually pump it, our short-term concern.
That's correct.
Not that the water isn't under the ground, but we can't get it out with the tools we have.
Yeah.
This question might be premature, but if we're not able to meet our supply and demand based on the pumping stations being down and the DEP processing for permitting takes so long, what's a town like us supposed to do in the interim while we're waiting for the permitting to go through?
Yeah, see, you have to manage the demand. So we're restricted on the supply side, so, you know, there's enough capacity there to meet at least the, you know, better than the average day. So we're going to have to manage the demand. So, and it's
Through, typically through regulation.
Well, through your, mostly outdoor water restrictions.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's not necessarily a daily thing, but it's, every couple of days, it's going to have to be an evaluation. Okay, what are we seeing for demand? How are our wells doing? Are we, are we getting the capacity we need from the treatment plants? And so it'll be, it'll be a constant evaluation, a daily evaluation, I would think, through those summer months. Question?
Yeah, I'm Ellen, I live on Olmwood Street. I would like to know if there's a way that you guys at the DEP can, or the DEP can, sorry, can have an idea of when there are going to be supply shortcuts and let us, the citizens of the town, know so that we can respond? Like maybe take shorter showers, water at different times of day? Like what, what can you guys do to let us know what's coming?
So that's kind of like what we're here right now. This is the first update to the board of selectmen, and then get everybody up to speed on what our current situation is and the status. And then that'll be in a discussion moving forward within the department on how we communicate that. That'll tell everybody. Historically, what we've done in previous years is that we've built annual water restriction that goes out, exactly, that goes out at the end of April, early May, apparently first. And that's out on the front of the sign boards, I mean, the first annual water calls in those five residents. Obviously, this year with the situation that we're in, there'll be more of an education piece considering, you know, installation of local closets and devices and appliances that we don't already have in the home. And the DEP has quite a bit of literature on the website as well. They notes conservation, water conservation measures that people can take to support that.
Sorry, I broke the ground rule by taking a question. I got carried away, apologies.
Well, thank you.
If you wouldn't mind continuing, I don't want to hold you off.
Yeah, yeah. So just to complete the story here on this slide. So we talked about your supply when you have all of your groundwater sources up and running as they currently operate today. The next piece of the story is, well, what if your largest plant goes down for an unexpected emergency reason? You know, you lose power, there's a big storm, whatever. So then it gets a little bit worse. At that point, if the largest treatment plant, which in this case is Rockland Ave., goes down, you only have Old Marlboro Road and Well Four to rely on. And if that were to happen, you're then below being able to meet the max day demand as well as the average day demand. So that's what that last bar shows there on this chart.
So I think one of the things that DPW has done to minimize that from happening is, you know, getting all the equipment, before we get into the summer months, getting all the equipment looked at, inspected, cleaned, and available for use. So the wells are being cleaned, some have already been cleaned, pumps are inspected. I know that's, I know that's an activity that the water staff is working on.
Yep. And on top of that, here on the next slide here, so, you know, in summary, you know, you're not able to meet your max day demand with the current supplies and in some cases, maybe not even the average day demand. And this is, you know, related to some wells currently being inactive. But as we talked about earlier, you know, we're talking about doing a replacement well near Well Seven, looking at maybe bringing Well Three back online. Also, you know, doing regular cleaning of all the wells on an annual basis or whatever helps to keep that capacity of all the wells a little bit, you know, above normal. So there's things that DPW does and that we're currently working on to try to address these problems, right? But in the meantime, that is the reality of the situation. So basically, what we talked about here is, in order to meet your average day demand, if the largest source were to go down, you need an additional point four million gallons per day. And if that same largest treatment plant goes down, in order to meet the maximum day demand, we're talking about an additional one MGD. So in the meantime, what Gary has already talked about is you really just need to manage the demand to match the supply, so water conservation. And then, so in summary here, you know, there are some options for these additional capacity that we need to find, right? You've got the groundwater sources. You've got potentially reactivating Well Three G at Old Marlboro Road, which would give us, you know, an estimate of a half a MGD. The replacement Well Seven at Rockland Ave., that's estimated to be also another point five MGD. Potential new source at the Well Four area, that's another, you know, point seven-two-ish MGD. That's also just estimated, based on what we think it could provide us. So all in all, if you add up all of the, if you did all these improvements to the groundwater wells, we're talking about a total of one point seven-two MGD that could be brought online, best case scenario. And then obviously, we have the one surface water source, White Pond, which could potentially provide up to one MGD as well. So then these next two charts kind of just show what the situation would look like if we brought on first, if we did all of the improvements to the groundwater wells. So Well Three, Well Seven, Well Four. If we do that, you can see, if you look all the way to the right, the situation improves drastically. You are able to meet both your average day demand and your max day demand with your largest water treatment plant down, which is what you ideally want to see. And then alternatively, or additionally, we looked at, well, what if we choose to build a new water treatment plant associated with White Pond? What does that provide us? So you bring White Pond online, obviously down the road. It doesn't quite get you where you need to be to meet your max day demand. So we'd also have to do improvements to one of the three groundwater sources that we've talked about. And drilling that replacement well at Well Seven is the, you know, most likely event to occur just because we know that that well out there should be good and DEP shouldn't have any real concerns with bringing that online.
That is, that is the highest priority, is bringing Rockland Ave., Well Number Seven back.
And has probability of occurring more quickly, I guess, too.
Correct.
So a quick question. So providing redundancy with groundwater sources, that is without Rockland Ave., Well Seven being brought back online, or is that including it?
Including it.
Including it.
The providing redundancy with groundwater sources. So what this does is we bring the Well Seven replacement well, Well Three online at Old Marlboro Road, and the new source at the Well Four.
But excludes White Pond.
Correct.
And then the one below, providing redundancy with White Pond and improvements to Rockland Ave., Well Seven only, that's not taking into account a new well bringing online or the improvements to Well Three G?
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Correct. It very well could include those. This was just to show that you need at least one of those things to happen to be able to meet that max day demand with White Pond.
Yeah, the point is, there's a relatively reasonable list of improvements that can be made to solve the problem. It takes time and money to do that, but there are, there are options available.
All right, if you had to give a guess, what would be the magnitude of money associated with getting all of the, all of the ground wells, not Brockland, I mean, not White's Pond? The in-town wells, say, groundwater sources.
We haven't, I haven't really looked at it that closely.
Which would be more expensive, getting White's Pond or the local wells?
White's Pond is certainly the more expensive option, yeah.
So we had a discussion recently, since the Well Seven last week. And we didn't, to give some numbers, so it looks like the replacement cost for the Well Seven, Well Seven here, Well G Eight at Old Marlboro Road, is going to be in the range of a hundred thousand dollars.
Just for drilling the adjacent site, like starting fresh, since we can't salvage that pipe?
Correct. So we, it'll be a new well utilizing the existing infrastructure that's there, utility connections. The project at Old Marlboro Road, which we're moving forward with from a mandate as part of our administrative consent, or from the EPs, in the range of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's Well Three.
Correct. That's one, that's Old Marlboro Road.
Okay.
So that's the process improvements only
Oh, okay.
To Well One and Well Two.
Yeah.
Not included on the Well Three. We're still in the early stages of Well Three. Just in discussion with the DEP if that will be feasible to afford that.
So you don't have a ballpark on that number yet?
No. And then we'll look at the next year's worth of work for DEP permitting, pump testing this summer at Well Four Eight, which is the well field, is in the range of two hundred thousand dollars. which is the well field, is in the range of $200,000.
Sorry, how much? Eight hundred.
Two hundred.
Two hundred thousand.
But that's just the next step.
And that gets to the permitting.
Yeah, that's just the permitting process, that'll lead us to about the next year. And then we're looking at, that doesn't include designing, construction of the transmission line from the well field to treatment plant and the upgrades at the Well Four treatment plant.
So that's eight hundred thousand without the designing, construction, so, which we all know we don't have.
Well, so I'm going to be submitting a warrant article at Special Town Meeting for this year. You'll receive it this week for that money for Barman Authority. And we've built the rate increase this spring, excuse me, last fall. We established the new rate increases and we built into that budget capital funding to allow to cover a note for the borrowed money. So asking for that eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollar, Barman Authority will not increase rates. We've already funded that in the budget for point nineteen.
And do we know of any state grants? I know David had asked about federal, but are there any other funding sources that might?
There's a state funding source, which will work with our Attorney Collector's Office. It's low interest loans rather than selling bonds, that's an option. So the Treasurer's Office is working on figuring out what the best rate is going to be and the best process for moving forward once we receive the Special Town Meeting vote to give us that Barman Authority to fund all these projects.
One more question, sorry. Do we have the internal staff to handle this construction within the department? Are we going to have to hire additional outside consultants or DPW workers?
These are consultants right here, so we'll be working with this group.
Okay, but do you guys do physical labor, like actual?
Yeah.
Nope.
We produce that.
We have the re-licensed treatment operators currently have on staff. My treatment license is in the process with the board, with the state for certification right now. So those treatment operators, they run our plants, and that's a recommended level from DEP. DEP actually recommended hiring an additional employee. We've pushed back on that because of funding, but we operate our plants with re-licensed treatment operators currently.
If I can add to that, the process really is, when you go get to the construction portion of these projects, is we'll do the, all the plans and specifications, go to public bid, and a contractor is hired to actually build, put in the pipe, build the buildings, all that kind of stuff.
And you were just on track, so to recap, the warrant article for the permission to borrow, the financing for that would be covered under the enterprise, the sewer rates, the sewer and water rates that we just approved back in the fall, and the enterprise fund dollars, so not coming back under a potential impact for whatever it is.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Just to reiterate Andrew's point earlier, there's no shortage of water within our wells underground. It's just the treatment facilities that we're addressing, like the infrastructure, correct?
The ability to pump.
Yeah, we do, there is a shortage.
There is a shortage, too.
The quality of the water coming out of the pumps is also inhibiting the ability to treat that much water because the plants weren't designed to necessarily treat poorer water quality, which raises another concern that, you know, this is a groundwater source that you can't expect it to stay a consistent quality over time. And it's treated you well for, you know.
Twenty-plus years.
Yeah. So this isn't surprising necessarily, you know, water quality does change, especially as you pump more and more water out of it. So water is the issue because even though you might have it, the quality maybe isn't where it should be.
Hence, it's not usable.
Yeah.
That's why also in that, in that, the Special Town Meeting warrant, we're going to finalize the number and ask for a month that's going to cover the early stages of pursuing the White Pond and the feasibility of installing a transmission line and that treatment plant down there. Since it's been six years since the town has looked into that option, costs changed, designs changed. So, but we're going to utilize a lot of the information that that committee worked on. It's a lot of great information they will provide to the town and move forward with those recommendations that are listed in that. And some of those other recommendations are listed in that report that we've done in the last year. They recommended D.R. testing and testing the water quality of the plants. And that's something that Katie has been, you know, spent hours and hours in our plants testing the water and, you know, making sure that it meets the specifications and determining what treatment methods will optimize these plants. So that's something that we have been following.
One comment I will say on the DEP's impact on the testing for the problems we had a couple of years ago. I think it's probably warranted that you share the positive that we've done in that aspect, right? We've brought these levels down nearly fifty percent, I believe, right?
That's correct. Yeah, so the maximum contaminative level for the triolomethane is eighty parts per billion. And we exceeded that two years ago, 2016. At a couple of our sampling locations, we sampled four locations in town. We exceeded that at two locations, working with DEP and Stan Tech. We've changed our operating procedures in the plants. We've tightened a lot of constraints and better monitoring, better operation of the plants. We've dropped now, we just sampled last week and we're down in the forties at all four locations. So we're well below, we've been below for over a year now. So that goes to show, you know, that's effort on the operator part, effort from our engineers, entire staff, to, you know, and from the town committee financially, it's been expensive. There never we've installed the equipment and processes that'll cost money. So we made that commitment and continue to move forward in that direction. And these, the step, next steps that we're going to be taking, especially the Old Marlboro Treatment Plant, are just going to help move that forward, where we're in a better position to buy safe drinking water to the residents of the town.
Thank you, Aaron. Any final thoughts, comments? Any questions from the board?
No.
Before we go?
Oh. I do, I have two questions from the audience. People are texting me from TV land.
Oh, all right. That's great.
Oh, that's cool.
What was the 2035 demand calculation? How was that determined, what our anticipated needs were?
The 2035 demand actually came from a 2011 or 2012 report that Woodard and Curran did back then, before I.
Based on projected population growth, presumably?
Yes, yeah, they looked at projected population growth. That was published through, I forget the name of the source, but, you know, it's the source that does all the municipalities.
So we can find the information where you can ask?
Yeah, so they looked at the historical average of water use within the town, and then they basically projected future water use based on the increase in population.
And then the, are we allowed to sell any excess capacity? So for instance, if we did develop White Pond, and now we have essentially doubled our capacity, all things being, working just the way they're supposed to, and Acton or Sudbury or Stowe needed some water, are we legally allowed to sell it?
You are. Lots of, lots of examples of that.
Essentially establish our own water department, or water company.
Yeah.
Are you talking about our groundwater or White Pond or both?
Any excess.
I'm suggesting if we spend a few million dollars to develop, to double our capacity, and we only need maybe a third of that to have plenty of water, we might be able to help pay the bill with, you know. It's not cheap.
Only in mained water?
I thought that there had been, I thought that there had been some discussion several years back where we raised the question about the possibility of selling water out of White's Pond. And I thought the state said no.
I'm not aware of that.
Jason, do you remember?
My recollection is that that was given to town council for review, and they looked at the original language from the legislative act that provided it, and indicated that it wasn't clear that we could, and therefore their opinion could not. And the consideration was, could that water be brought into town and commingled with groundwater and then sold? And their thought was, no, it could not.
So it could be that there's another opinion out there that might differ with that.
It could, or the town could go back to the legislature and ask them to.
Allow for it, yeah.
The language of that original act from 1870.
1888.
So they hand it back there?
Be careful what you ask for, you're not using it, somebody else might want it, too. Don't bring it to the attention of Sudbury Hudson or Stowe, they may, they may, it's not using it, let's grab it. You know, I was on the committee that issued the report that Aaron had referenced a couple of times tonight. And I'm going to get emotional about this. I'm hoping this board will do something about the water issue in Vane. It was a problem five years ago when we studied it, that's why we studied it, and nothing got done. And now here we are with Rockland, the deepest well we have, and a failed pump, and a problem, a potential problem. And some of us have lived here long enough to remember the days when you overpumped at Old Marlboro Road, which is in an iron bog. Iron and manganese are very bad in this part of the country, but they're especially bad. That's called the old bog road, the iron bog road, it's like sawdust, you know, the iron. It's loaded. When you pumped to a certain, you remember, we were giving away stuff to treat people's tubs and toilets, and laundry was ruined. Everything I'm hearing here tonight is what I heard five or six years ago. Unless there are new treatments and we can squeeze more water, better water, we're right back where we were five or six years ago. I don't hear anything new, you know, unless these gentlemen and ladies who are engineers and experts in water can tell me that there are new treatments in those Old Marlboro Road and the Green Meadow. I think that's Well Four, is that what you're talking about? You know, the water's not a lot of good, and that's why we don't use them. Now, they're shallow wells, and they're full of iron and manganese. And the filters are like, what, a hundred thousand dollars every time they have to take one out? So I just hope that we really pay some attention to this issue now. Some of us remember a few years ago when lightning struck Rockland Avenue and we were offline, and we were buying our water from Acton. Anything could happen, and we, you know, we can have the nicest schools and the greatest fire department, but if we don't got water, we've got a big problem. So I just would ask everybody to take this seriously, don't put it back on the shelf, look at it, listen to what these people say. We really need to pay attention to this issue, it's so basic to everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do think, just off of Ellen's point, that as we think about presenting this at the Special Town Meeting with the warrant article, that that really is an excellent opportunity to be educating the community about the scope of the problem. So as we think ahead to town meeting, and, you know, both as the board and as we ask people to come up and present articles or supporting information that we want to have as part of those articles, it might behoove us to think about including some of the slides from tonight's presentation just to inform the community so that more people have access to this type of information. It will probably also help us in explaining why we're going to have the water bans that we will and why we'll be making a much more focused effort on enforcement, too. So just something for us to think about as we look ahead to scripting that evening.
I think the other point, too, is we haven't had any big developments in Vane, but cumulatively, we have added, and we will add, 129 Parko, there's a potential for several hundred people living there. We have a brewery in town that uses a considerable amount of water now, and others may join that. We have, you know, new apartment buildings on Main Street, Mr. McDonald's and Parker Street, that have added considerable numbers of uses to our system. Cumulatively, as you add those all things up, those are additional uses. And I think we're headed in that direction, so I can see more use of our water in the future.
Any final comments, Mr. Creel?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions from the presentation. And I'm sorry, I won't be at the screen if I get it there. On the, I guess the first question, on Well Three G, it's inactive. Is that the well that had the tannins, the tannin issue, or?
That's the well out at Old Marlboro Road that definitely had a lot of color water quality concerns, organics and whatnot in it.
Okay, so I know that was one that when we were on the committee, you know, we understood, you know, that's aesthetically not pleasing, but at the time, I think there was some consideration that there was really not a health issue there. However, I would imagine with the TTHM issue, that that is potentially contributing to that also.
Well, and that's one of the reasons why we have to do a whole slew of water quality testing as part of this exploratory phase to even think about bringing Well Three online. And that's, you know, that water quality analysis will tell us a lot of information that we just don't know right now.
Can I interrupt you for one second? I know you want to look at each other, but nobody in the public can actually hear what's being discussed right now. So if we could just speak into the mics, and Jason, if you wouldn't mind coming up to that microphone there, thank you.
Yeah, so to continue, yes, we'll be doing water quality testing as part of that Well Three activation process. It'll give us a lot more information about the water quality that's there. And it could indicate that there are actual potential public health concerns, or it could not. But then again, you also don't want to be putting colored water out into your system for the public to consume. That doesn't encourage, you know, the trust from the public.
I think everybody's happier without ice cream from the town.
Yeah, so even though it might be safe, I mean, you saw that with the iron and manganese that was brought up. Like, nobody wants to see it, you know, water.
And I think at one point, there was some consideration of balanced population for that location, but it sounds like you guys are studying that right now, so that would come out of that. But the decision on potential treatment would come out of that.
Yeah, there's a bunch of potential treatments that could come out of that if water quality is a concern from Well Three, and, you know, that would be one of the considerations.
And the other was on the graph that you showed, you did show, so the average daily flow, I think, was in the ballpark of about 0.29, I probably don't really read.
Yeah, no, it's about 0.9 exactly.
Okay. Typically, it's about a day, okay. And then you also have the max date of about 1.5. The one thing I didn't notice that we didn't have on there was the actual Water Management Act permit.
Yeah.
Limit of 1.09.
Yep.
And how that, because that would have presumably dropped us closer to our average. It looks like we went pretty close to our.
But that, the Water Management Act permit, it is 1.09, like you said, but that's an average value, you know what I mean, throughout the year, so.
Annual basis.
Yeah, so you still need to be able to have more capacity to meet these max day demands.
Sure, and that's so, just, I'm sorry, you just mentioned that that's an average day on the annual?
Yes.
Okay, so you can have more than a period of days. I think it's clear just for folks to know that, you know, when we say that we're at 1.1, and we have four million, five million gallons of water sitting on the hill over here, that that's only good for a few days before you can provide the issues. Whereas, you know, at that 1.09, we really do need to be slightly above that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one other question, does anyone know where the wildlife people and the fire academy get their water?
Fire Academy, I believe, has their own well now. I'm told they have their own wells.
They have their own wells, because I understood the firefighters were taking water from our system.
I believe they were.
Yeah.
I believe, they installed their own well at some point, no?
And the wildlife refuge, do they have their wells, or are they tapping into our whole system?
I, we don't deliver water to any wildlife plants. I know that there are some exploratory wells on the wildlife plants. I believe there are also some on the Pima lands as well.
Yeah.
We do deliver water to the Pima.
All right, important topic. I'm going to call it quits for the night on this one, and thank you for coming and presenting to us.
Our pleasure.
We generated a lot of questions and concerns, so thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah.
So we're going to move on to item number eight. This should be pretty quick, I think. Development agreements, 42 Summer and 115 Main Street. Planning Board is asking for permission to negotiate development agreements. So the recommended action is move to allow Planning Board to create draft development agreements for 42 Summer Street and 115 Main Street and bring the draft to the Board of Selectmen for its joint approval. I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Cheryl? And the Planning Board wishes to begin the required development agreement process. It is required under the downtown overlay district rules for density bonuses. The agreement is between the developer, the Planning Board, and the Selectmen. The Planning Board is already scheduled to meet with the developer and can draft and can craft the initial DA without having to set up extra meetings with some or all of the BOS members. In advance of doing this, the Planning Board asks the BOS for input to the negotiation. Any comments?
So I have a couple of comments. I had looked at purchasing 42 Summer Street, it's not a big. not a big footprint. I don't see how they're going to get 26 units in there and 28 at Gruber Brothers. And it brings up a lot of concerns with where those cars are going to go. Parking's really tight. We obviously have water and sewer issues in town. It just seems like really high density for those areas.
It's true. The downtown overlay district allows for the applicant to apply for additional bonus units, provided there's a criteria that's met. I don't agree or disagree at this point until I see an actual analysis with the final project, but the applicant, just because he applies for something doesn't mean that's what the Planning Board ultimately will determine his warranty.
And it's the same applicant for both properties?
That's correct. It's McDonald Development. And so the, this is done through a special permit, so the Planning Board has, doesn't have to grant it. They can decide what they feel is appropriate, and that's basically the way that would work under the downtown overlay district. As a incentive for affordable housing, the downtown overlay district does allow for developers to apply for this sort of density bonus.
On the affordable housing issue, my understanding is the overlay district requires 15% affordable, the overlay district requires 15% affordable.
Minimum.
Minimum. And I would suggest that we, when the Planning Board begins, that the request for the percentage of affordable units is much higher than that, probably around 25%. I think that would also then allow us to utilize the full number of units in our denominator relative to the mass housing, given that they're rental units. And so the better job we do with these types of development agreements protects us from predatorys, you know, and nothing against affordable housing, of course, because I support it, but against the bigger projects that come in and can do damage to us. I agree with Melissa's observations relative to our infrastructure issues and everything else. The other point that I would make is, especially Melissa pointed out, traffic and parking, especially near the Gruber Brothers project, that's already tight as it is. And I was there the other day, and there was literally, you know, on a Saturday or a Sunday, there was really no place to park. There's now a bunch of handicap spots, I think, if I remember correctly, that weren't there before, that now are blocked from people parking there. My concern would be access, so that it sort of opens it up a little bit for Mr. McDonald, access to the area from the town's parking lot. Because if we don't give him that, he then is required to have access from other areas that could impact the intersection out in front, and have people coming in on the side of the river, or whatever it might be. But that's just something for the Planning Board to think about, is access from the town's parking.
Absolutely. There's no question that any applicant in a downtown situation is going to have to demonstrate how the project works for circulation, for parking, and so on. On the other hand, since I've been here, we've had the downtown overlay district really the whole time, and there's always going to be a problem with parking in a downtown area. It's never going to be the same ratios that work for other locations in town. And the Planning Board does have the leeway in cases to reduce parking requirements. So for example, if you're building studio apartments, do you really need two or three parking spaces, you know, or whatever the case may be? So hopefully, there's a balance that can be struck and that we can work with, because it makes it difficult from, I think, from town's point of view, to encourage downtown infill and redevelopment with some of these obstacles that we're going to run into in a downtown area. Parking is right at it. I think that, you know, there's some creative ways around some of it, and one of them probably reducing parking requirements in smaller units.
And the other concern at that particular location is the parking area that everybody is familiar with, you go into CVS, it's private property. And so, you know, you cannot have the traffic flow. That basically becomes a street at times with people going through because it's used as a cut through. And that's a concern, too, because if there's more traffic going in, and we do allow access from the town parking lot
Yes.
in the back, then it becomes even more, it's a driveway for those people. So some, there has to be some type of an understanding there. So I might be sounding, you know, controverting my own point, but the real point is, that CVS parking lot's a disaster.
It is very, very challenging.
It's very difficult.
So recognizing that they'll, as part of the plan, they'll have to bring a presentation for the circulation of traffic flow and a proposal on that, I would just also, in both cases, you kind of have properties that are also along the rail trail, so kind of elements, I'll be interested in discussions around elements of river accessibility, you know, how views kind of from a 360 and things like that. I would say for the Main Street location, just also any thoughts that they have around environmental mitigation, doing construction, because they're literally right up against the river. So those would just be, kind of going back to the Planning Board's ask to us among the list of things that the Board will be interested in.
Understood. I think, I think an important aspect of the downtown overlay district is, while there are incentives to encourage development in these areas, there's also a burden on the, and rightfully so, that's placed on the applicant or on the developer to, for example, provide access or views to the river. This is specifically called out in the zoning bylaws, and that's something that must be demonstrated.
And we should remember the Barringer Report that emphasized the usage, you know, as we redevelop, especially in buildings along the river, that we should utilize the river as a town asset, as opposed to turning our backs on it. So in other words,
Oh, yes.
you should have, don't have the back of the building up against the river. Maybe that could be somehow incorporated as, you know, part of the, you know.
I'm hoping that becomes part of our master plan as well.
Exactly.
Reclamation of the riverfront, so we're not walling off our restaurant's view from the river.
And Cheryl's point raised some concern, you know, with the locality of the rail trail.
Yes.
Additional traffic there is really a concern with people walking and biking and what have you.
It's also an opportunity.
At both locations, really, relative to the rail trail.
Quick question, just to have some clarity here. The driveway on the left-hand side, if you're facing Gruber's Brothers, is private property, no? That's their driveway?
Yes.
So if the access is to the property, why would they have to even bother coming through CVS? They'd have their own access to their property. We don't even know what the design of the building is going to look like yet. Very well could have parking allocated underneath in a portion of the building they build there, right, which would be the smart thing to do. So I think we're talking about traffic flow, which really, to me, doesn't, I don't understand the traffic flow even issue.
The only concern would be the exiting of that, if that were the only exit for individuals coming out of that, that new home, the apartment building, that intersection becomes kind of.
But it exists now. It's an actual.
Nobody uses, nobody uses that left-hand side.
But it goes, it goes back to that, I think, as Bill already, as Bill responded to David's original point, is that part of what the developer will be asked to present is an analysis of how flow would work, and that will be something that Planning Board looks at in terms of how that intersection.
I understand, but you're talking about a driveway. We're not talking about a road.
No, but.
It's egress and ingress to private property.
Right, which will, which currently has not been utilized, which, I mean.
I understand what you're saying, but it's.
But what we're talking, it's in many ways, I would make the analogy to when we talked about Rockland Ave for the fire station, right? So that you're, you're talking about a very different now type of use on a type of property, which will have a different type of impacts on traffic flow, which are something we have to address, because we already get questions from the, as the Board, about concerns that pedestrians have at that intersection with traffic as it exists today. If you added 28 units with one to two cars per unit coming in and out going to work, that would have a very significant impact on a very congested portion of town.
We can agree to disagree. It's a driveway, it's private property. I think the bigger issue is not anything to do with pedestrians. The bigger issue is, do they have enough space to actually build parking for the units they want to, they want to put in there of 28, right?
And I would posit that as we are in the process of having a development agreement, where this is the time where, as a town, we talk about our concerns, this is exactly the time to be talking about the, with the owner of private property, about these types of impacts on town-level infrastructure.
Yeah, I just don't want people to get confused. We're not, we're not talking about the CVS parking lot here. We're not talking about creating a loop, and I don't.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I mean, this is, they have their own designated ingress and egress to their private property.
They do. And what they'll be required to do is demonstrate how it works.
Yeah. And it shouldn't, it shouldn't impact the rail trail either, because they could potentially close off that area. I don't even know if that's a legal throughway up there. It's fenced off right now, but.
Mr. Chairman, these are some of the issues that need to be vetted at a public hearing with the Planning Board on that specific topic. The agenda topic is to allow the Planning Board to start the process of the development agreement. Similar to 129 Parker Street, a development agreement was, was brought out, then it went to town meeting for concept plan, then the Planning Board for site plan. It starts with that development agreement. If we decide they're only going to get 20 units there, that agreement might say, this is the exaction that comes from the developer. We get 30 units there, we get a different exaction, because it's going to impact traffic differently. It's having that conceptual discussion now, not the details about whether this is a fence going here, or.
Agreed. Included in the motion, however, the way I heard it, was recommendation, that there was a request for recommendations from the Board as to what to consider for.
So what I've written down so far is 25% affordable, traffic concerns, flow, volume.
Yep.
Sliding scale depending on the size of the permit, number of units, and considerations for rail trail, river access, and other enhancements.
Yep, I think that's accurate.
To, you know, sort of beautify the, what we have down there. Other things we want to hear, and it doesn't have to come tonight, but I'd rather avoid getting into things that somebody would say, this was not a posted public hearing for this topic.
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Is there a statute or regulation as to the minimum size an individual unit has to be? It just seems that both those structures are too small for 28 and 26 units respectively, unless they're planning on demolishing and rebuilding in some way.
They are.
I would hope they are.
They are.
Yes. And no, there is not a specific unit size.
How many, how many units does Jimmy have at the Wallham Street location?
I don't know.
I'm not, I'm not.
Do you know how many there are at?
You're talking about the one at the corner?
I think like 20, I think like 20.
Yeah, do you know how many there are at McDonald's?
I'm going to say 26.
Just to sort of get an idea how big this structure.
I believe it's 20, I'm thinking 26.
26 at 10 Main Street, Andrew just said.
Yeah, I don't know about.
I believe so. I'm not sure on Wall.
Main Street is 26.
So it's approximately that size?
Which one up Main Street?
So the question that Melissa brings up is why there's a development agreement requirement, because the developer is asking for a density bonus in the downtown overlay district, as only allows for this. But the density bonus, what that means is, I have permission to build units that are not normally permitted, smaller units, that it's more dense on that parcel than normally allowed. It's not an as-of-right development. So that, that request triggers the need for the development agreement. For all the things we already sort of debated, hey, this might be a problem. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. That's what we need to figure out. But the answer to your question is, I believe it's 1,500 square feet is the current minimum?
It's, it drops to 800 with.
Drops to 800, or down.
Downtown, it's almost half.
Per unit.
Per unit.
Not, not for the.
You could probably get 28 800-foot units, and what you're looking at going, how are you going to do that? Well, if they're a lot smaller, you probably can.
But to be clear, the 800 feet is of lot area required, rather than 1,500. So that's, with a, with a lot like this, you know, adds considerable density, which was the goal.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I made that sound like it was the size of the apartment. It's.
It's the lot itself.
The amount of units you can have on the lot, based on a smaller.
One last observation or comment, if I can remember what my point was going to be. When we build the development agreement, I'm hopeful that we can sort of build into it mandated, that certain things have to be completed before, before occupancy permits are allowed.
With milestones, yes.
So we're not spending three years chasing somebody, threatening to bring to court, you know, and we still don't have our lamp post that was supposed to be up, you know, four years before.
Understood.
So I, I.
Agreed, understood.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Do we have an appetite to vote? All right, so you want me to reread the motion? Move to Alala Planning Board to create draft development agreements for 42 Summer Street and 115 Main Street, and bring the draft to the Board of Selectmen for joint approval. It's been seconded by Selectmen Steel. All those in favor?
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item number nine, excuse me, outdoor dining permit fee.
Nice try, Bill.
What fee should the BOS charge for outdoor dining permits? Okay.
This isn't for you. I was going to hand you something.
I'm not going to bother reading a motion, because it's a blank dollar amount right now. We can go back after if we have the appetizer.
That's right. So the outdoor dining that was passed at town meeting last week, sort of begs the question of, we normally charge for permitting these types of activities in our downtown. It wasn't part of what was passed at town meeting. My recommendation from the town administration would be that we consider not charging a permit fee, and this would be based on the Economic Development Committee's desire to encourage more business opportunities downtown, and this is one of them. If the town allows outdoor dining within that new bylaw, we would presumably receive more meals tax revenue, and that may be what the town gets from it. In addition to that, for a restaurant to take advantage of this, it will have to spend several hundred dollars just to receive the permission from us, without us charging a fee. The ABCC will charge a fee, and we have to do a public hearing, which would require advertising and noticing to a butters. So we estimate that cost to be about $300, without even getting to what the town might want to take from them, just so that they can start selling drinks on the sidewalk. So my recommendation, or really, the town's recommendation to the Board is to consider a low fee or no fee beyond those necessary ones I just outlined.
Well, when we consider the purpose of a fee, which is to basically cover costs of a community that might be incurred, some people may use it as revenue raising, but really, it's intended to be covering the costs at least of the community. Would there be any costs associated with having outdoor seating? For example, if you have somebody, which I wouldn't expect any of our current, you know, business owners not to clean up, but if that happens, who does that fall on? DPW. There's a cost associated with that. So isn't this an assurance, if there's a small fee, it's an assurance that we have the cost associated with our expenses associated with?
I, no, I would say the cost recovery that we would want is the cost to hold the public hearing, so the advertisement, the butters list would be covered. Perhaps the time of managing that, Becky Mosca does a lot of the legwork on that. Our building commissioner would be doing the inspections down at the restaurant to verify that the intended installation of barriers that are required meets the specification. But again, from my standpoint, that's sort of all in a day's work.
Mm-hmm.
What you're suggesting would be more of a code enforcement. Someone hasn't done what they were supposed to do in terms of cleanup. We could find them with existing bylaws on code enforcement.
Or I guess we could also not approve their request the following year.
That's right. So, you know, there's other avenues there. I'm looking at it purely from encouraging the business development and not putting another hurdle in front of them.
I don't think a small fee or a fee of some sort is going to discourage business development, and I feel like we, as a Board, have a fiduciary responsibility to this town, which is facing a lot of revenue shortfalls at the moment, and anywhere we can pick that up would be helpful. And I don't think, you know, a hundred-dollar fee for an entire summer season, where we all know it's going to encourage more patronage at these restaurants, you know, hopefully from out of towners, too, who are seeking outdoor dining, is going to prohibit businesses from applying, whereas it could really help the town.
I would tend to agree. I would say it's, you know, it's, we're providing them a service and an opportunity to do this.
And the risk, I mean.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's going to be costs. Maybe not exact, maybe we'll disagree with the cost with, between you and David, what you discussed, but there'll be more police involvement downtown now. There'll be potentially more fire involvement downtown now. There could be accidents. It could be a number of things. But either way, I think it's skinning the game from these establishments into the town. So a hundred dollars to me would be something that I would gladly sign off on, and I think if any business in town thinks that's too much money to put, to get additional, you know, up-leveling over the competition, then, then that's on them, but.
And I think other towns charge that, if not more around the state.
I know we're not Cambridge, I know we're not, yeah.
Do you have a list of what other towns might charge for this type of?
I have no idea.
No?
They do charge quite a bit, though.
I have, the only one I had that researched. I have, the only one I had that, that, um, researched was Arlington was a hundred and twenty-five dollars, I believe.
As you expect, Cambridge is more, Somerville's more, Boston's more.
I feel like a hundred bucks for a whole season is a bargain.
It's a season.
I'm not arguing.
And it's not, it's not gonna be a lot of money, but again, it's singles and doubles in this town, right? Because we're losing money, singles and doubles, every time you turn around. So we can recoup something, and I think it's a benefit. We're, we're offering this as a town, and, you know, it's, it's something that they wanna do. It's a differentiator for these businesses as well, too. So, and I think, everybody in this board has been very fair with small business in this town, especially when it comes to granting applications for the beep, very supportive of the EDC. I don't think this is out of line at all, in my opinion.
I mean, we could even create like a hardship waiver or something, if a business absolutely couldn't afford it, or something, if they were starting out on a case-by-case basis.
I see a question in the audience. If you wouldn't mind just coming up to the, one of the mics, because the complaints offend that mics aren't working.
I wouldn't overcomplicate with a waiver provision.
Okay.
Anyway, hello.
Is this mic on? Do we know?
This mic is on. Have any businesses downtown actually expressed interest in acquiring such a permit? I'm curious. Okay, thanks.
I don't know if they've expressed interest in acquiring a permit. They've expressed interest in opening up and serving outside.
Since the, since the town meeting, we've had a direct inquiry.
Do we want to agree on the amount? Do we want to wait for the Selectmen to settle to get back to weigh in as well, or?
No, I think we're all consistent.
Yeah.
Hundred bucks.
You wanna throw the number down?
You can read the motion.
All right.
All right.
Perhaps I can. Move to establish fee for outdoor dining permit at $100 for the 2018 outdoor dining season.
Second.
Five seconds. Oh, thank you, David. We already had a discussion. Nobody else wanna say anything, right? All those in favor? All right. Unanimous. Thank you very much, Bill.
Thank you.
Now you're free.
Oh, now we gotta do some speaking, huh? Agenda item number 10, draft controls to be reviewed for May 21st, 2018. Recommended action, move to accept, oh, I'm sorry, hold on a second. Move to accept draft control Q. Can I read them all at one time? Move to accept draft controls O, amend inclusionary zoning bylaw. Move to accept draft control Q, amend bylaw Chapter 18, Section 4A. Move to accept draft control R, amend bylaw Chapter 28, fire alarm systems. Move to accept draft control S, amend bylaw Chapter 30, underground fuel storage. Move to accept draft control T, amend bylaw Chapter 29, hazardous materials. Move to accept draft control U, amend bylaw Chapter 40, fire prevention safety. Move to accept draft control V, Community Preservation Reserve Fund appropriations. Move to accept and approve draft control Y, amend Recreation Revolving Fund. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Take it away, Andrew.
Uh, these, this is fairly routine. We're putting these onto the warrant. They continue to get vetted, uh, between now and April 17th, when the final draft versions will be then sent to printing. I believe the 19th is the printer deadline. So, um, if you read through these, you may find some things that you say, the wording looks a little funny, where everything's being reviewed by legal for fine tuning. Um, if there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them. For instance, on the Recreation Revolving Fund, that's a technical issue that we have to correct, things like that. Most of these that you see tonight are fairly routine.
I do have a question to that point on the Recreation Department. There's a little bit of a synopsis on the top of the next page. Yes, draft article Y, I'm sorry. Um, the funds will be used in support of the marketing wages for coaches slash referees and related contract hires. Is this related to what programs?
So, um, the current Recreation Revolving Fund, this is the technical issue, is a 53D, and it can't be used for certain things like paying for coaches, let's say. But a 53E and a half revolving fund, which is what we're gonna try to establish with this article, uh, would allow us broader spending capabilities, including things like hiring coaches. Um, our Recreation Commission has recently come to us, they presented last time, uh, you may recall, uh, and are looking to start, um, being the direct sponsor of events that for the past few years have been handled either not at all, or by the Boys and Girls Club, and so on. So if they become the direct, uh, sponsor of it, they'll hire the coaches, hire the referees, solicit the money from the, uh, people participating, and ideally, you know, the, the money would flow through that account. Money in, the money out.
Let me give you an example of what I'm thinking you're saying. So for example, if we wanted to start like a summer recreation, street hockey league. Okay, not necessarily a already existing program like Aspen Little League or Maine and Youth Soccer, right? That's what we're talking about.
That's right. We're not trying to take over those organizations, but there may be some complementary things or redundant things. Uh, for instance, the Boys and Girls Club, uh, does a lot of the basketball camps. There's certain ones that they would prefer to run, uh, for a variety of reasons, and certain ones that they would prefer a recreation run. So it may look like there's duplication, but they're actually different activities around the same sport.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you. Uh, any questions, comments on the board?
No.
Any comments? Uh, all right.
I thought everything was pretty straightforward, and control V as well, for the Community Preservation Reserve Fund.
No questions on Article Q? I'm just kidding, I haven't even read it.
We just got a text. Someone just got a text. Let's see if there's an Article, a question on Article Q. All right, so I guess we'll, uh, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor? Thank you. All right. Homestretch. Number 11, Town Administrative Report. Andrew, any comments? Very nicely done again. Thank you.
Yeah, she wasn't out of town this week. She got to do it a little extra.
More pictures than Stephanie does.
More pictures, that's right. Um, yeah, I think it's self-explanatory. I don't have, uh, things to add this week.
Okay. Great. I'd like to see the, uh, the certificate of the funding, a hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. It's always nice to see.
And Bill closing with our, uh, executive secretary and our lieutenant governor. I'm sure he's thrilled.
Uh, anybody on the board have any comments about the TA report?
No, I think we should just point out, though, that if people still have brush, like, in their yards, there's gonna be chipping days on the 7th and 14th of April at DPW with a $10 minimum charge to help people get rid of that.
Yeah.
That's correct. And, um, I'm not positive if this, uh, has happened or not. Aaron approached me about waiving that fee.
I think it did, because I, uh, sort of, sort of a compliment. Thank you, Aaron, for waiving the fee.
There was a lot of, um, concern about whether or not it's a town tree or personal trees, and rather than sort of haggling with everybody, the amount of money to be brought in wasn't gonna be tremendous. And he just felt it would be a, a more of a goodwill gesture, given the magnitude of that storm in March. Which was different than what the board was told at the last meeting.
And, and the Electronic Board at, um, at the intersection near the 27 and 117 says there's a $10 charge, but if it's waived, maybe they should change it. I don't know if he's gonna waive it for each and every one, or if it was just that one.
That's, I'm not positive.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no, I believe they, I don't believe they ever charged, but it did come up after the fact. I'll, I'll mention it around tomorrow morning.
We, we are, we're not gonna waive the fact that we're not going around to pick up the brush from people's houses. I do see a bunch of people. If you're listening out there, the 12 of you who are watching, don't throw stuff on the street. We're not gonna pick it up on you.
I think that, I think there are some communities that are doing that. I've seen Sudbury's doing it, and I saw Bolton was doing it, but, uh.
And you can still hold burning permits until, uh, the 30th of April.
Yeah, there's, there's a number of options, and different communities have, you know, tree lots and brush pile places, things that we don't have. And so every, every community handles these things with their unique abilities.
Let's hope there's water, if we're gonna give fire permits out. All right, thanks, Andrew. Um, I have no report, because I'm not really the chairman. He didn't leave a report for us to go through, so we won't go through anything else. But I will turn over the board members. Selectmen Steel?
Uh, no, just to advise the board that I will be on travel during our next board meeting, but, um, I can work with Andrew on logistics, um, if I'm needed for a vote or to get any questions to carry forward on my, a proxy on my behalf.
Can I FaceTime you?
Uh, I, we might be able to arrange that.
We gotta figure that out, Andrew. That could be, that could be useful in the future for you guys.
Yeah, it's still not, not a legal process, but there are, uh, there is a lot of talk about it.
Uh, Selectmen Gavin?
Um, really, my only comment is I want to congratulate, um, town hall staff, the elections, or the, um, town meeting staff, so, so to say. Uh, I really thought that the town meeting went pretty well, and, uh, that, um, I think most residents who attended were also happy with the process and, and the discussion. So, uh, that's sort of, and I called Andrew to congratulate him after town meeting, 'cause I thought that it went really well.
I would agree. It actually was a festive occasion. A lot more people showed up than I thought they would for.
I have to give the credit to the moderator, the town clerk, uh, and Becky Mosca for all the logistics running so smoothly.
Except there was no candy.
There was candy. Plenty. There was a bag of oranges.
He was just distracted by my oranges.
Gotta sit in the back row if you want the sweets, David.
Uh, Selectmen Libby and Hero.
I just had a question, um, for Andrew. Do we know what the monetary savings are on the health insurance, so we can close the loop with the school committee from the last meeting?
We do.
Is that gonna, can we, can we put that as an, we don't wanna discuss it tonight, 'cause it wasn't posted. Can we put it as an agenda item for the next meeting, so we can follow up with them?
That's right. I, I met with the chairman last week, because he was gonna be away, uh, tonight, and he asked, uh, in conversation with me, to, let's do this at April 17th.
Okay.
The number is known. Um, it is approximately $200,000. I don't know it, I don't have it memorized. Um, and then all the different concerns we have, whether it's coming off the tax levy, whether it's going to cuts, uh, to the townside budget, or whether it's gonna be used for school or just ignored, because the reality is, we don't know how many people might sign up for health insurance. We might actually need some of that access capacity if, if we have folks signing up at 15,000 a pop. So, um, we'll outline that at the next meeting, but then the board can decide, uh, which way they wanna go with the, uh, with the reallocation.
Okay. That's all. Oh, and the parking van is long, we should notify people, even though it keeps snowing. You can park on the street.
All right. Uh, the only thing I'll have, I, I have to add, and it's really just because of the, the conversation that we had tonight with the waterers. I watched a show on Netflix recently with my wife called Flint Town. Have anybody seen that? It's about Flint, Michigan, and it's primarily a story about the inner city and policing, right? But there's a backstory to it as well that impacted the city, which is a massive water problem that they tried to solve by turning on a separate source of water, which happened to be the Flint River. Ended up causing a bunch of problems with poisoning people, and so, you know, there's problems with water sources all over the place. And I'm not saying we, we're, we're like Flint, but my point is, we have to be very careful with investing in the infrastructure that supports the everyday needs that we have. And I almost wish that our friends from the school department and the school committee were actually here tonight for this meeting as well, so they could have heard this presentation in person. Because as one of the residents Ellen Duggan did say, you know, this is a conversation that we've had several years ago, and it's gone away for a little bit of time, because we've really been distracted, but now it's back up and rearing its head again, and it's, we have to take care of this. And like everything else, we have to take care of balancing the town budget, paying for the schools, paying for, you know, municipal services, whatever it may be. We still have to take care of the infrastructure that allows us to actually live, which is the water sewer environment, right? So we just gotta keep that in mind, and I, I, I urge us to get together and really help Aaron make his case at town meeting in May, because it's more than likely the, the proper thing to do for the residents of the town. That, that's all I have. So, uh, thank you for hanging in there. I appreciate it, and I'm gonna call us at 9:05 tonight. We didn't break any records, that's for sure, but.